All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Adrian Vigeli. I am the executive assistant to Eric Duncan, our Member of Parliament, and I will act as your moderator this evening. I've been receiving a lot of emails from a lot of you throughout the day today as far as questions already. Those have already been forwarded over to Eric and to Jim, so they will be addressing a lot of those in their opening remarks and alternating from questions from you tonight and then also those that have been, as I said, submitted in writing earlier. What I will ask you to do, because we are such a large number this evening, as Eric said, we're looking at upwards of 150, 160 people. I'm going to ask that you use the function of raising your hand. It gives it to me in a chronological order where I can get to your questions that way. If you're on a desktop or on your phone, it's down in the participant section. If you click on participant, it'll give you the option there to raise your hand. I'd ask you not to use the chat function to ask questions. It's just impossible for me to keep a grasp on this many people when the questions are going that way. When it is time for your question, I will unmute your mic so you'll be able to obviously vocalize your question that way to Eric, Jim, or Dr. Paul, and then I'll mute the mic again afterwards. Just so everyone knows, we are recording this as well, so it will be available online either later tonight or first thing tomorrow morning, so you can obviously share with friends and family for those that weren't able to join us this evening. We're going to start off with MP Duncan giving his update, followed by MVP McNally, and then a short update from Dr. Paul, and then really it's going to be about listening to you and answering your questions. So with that, I'm done. I will turn it over to Eric, and you can kick us off.
Thanks, Adrian. Good evening, everybody. I had somebody say to me on a conference call yesterday, what an amazing time to be a new Member of Parliament and get broken in with an issue like this, and I don't think it goes beyond, there's not a single job in this country, whether you're new or whether you're experienced, that is, learning day by day, if it's learning new technology and trying to get feedback of how we can help people and do our jobs, and I'll be in a new setting for the next little while. It's been wonderful to see the number of people. We just sent this out yesterday afternoon. And Jim and Dr. Paul and I have done meetings weekly with many mayors. I know Dr. Paul is doing regular media rounds, and we were hoping to get maybe a couple of dozen, and we have over 100 people on the line here tonight, and we had about 160 RSVPs, so it's wonderful. I'll talk fast like I normally do because I want to get through our updates and get to as many questions as you can, and I'll apologize in advance if I'm a little brief in some of my answers. I will just say ahead of time, because of the number, we got 23 questions in ahead of time already, and there's a wide variety of sectors. Some may not apply to every business, but we'll try to get through them as best we can. If we can't get to your question tonight, or you'd like some more detail or to follow up with either Jim or myself or Dr. Paul, the email that was sent to you at my parliamentary email address, please don't hesitate to send an email with your name and phone number. And tomorrow, I'm not taking any Zoom calls tomorrow, no conference call meetings tomorrow. I'm getting caught up on my call list. And I've found talking to businesses one-on-one, I've talked to dozens, if not getting into the hundreds now, in the last month directly, and it's been very helpful for myself, and I know Jim's the same way too, of taking our messages, what we're hearing, back to Queens Park and Parliament Hill. And I think frankly you've seen in the last few weeks the governments be responsive to some of the challenges we've heard from the business community. So we want to keep that up and keep doing that. Just a note, our media friends who are on the call are always welcome for this, and this will be public, I believe, on your TV tomorrow. So again, some people, if you have a more personal question or comment about your business, just don't hesitate to send an email, and I'm happy, or Jim would be happy to do a one-on-one call in your personal, private situation if you prefer that. We're going to do a Facebook Live Town Hall next week on individuals. We had some questions come in today, some great questions, for examples, on seniors and some of the impacts that way. We will do another one next week that focuses on individuals, open on Facebook Live. And this one here on business is not the only one, it's the first one we're doing. And I think by the turnout, there's certainly an interest for this, and we'll keep these up. I wanted to start, and as I'm learning technology, I'm going to share my screen here with a couple of updates. Can everybody see my notes page there now?
Yep.
Perfect, okay. So just to give the general number for my constituency office, you have the email, that's the toll-free number that works anywhere in the writing. We've literally had thousands of calls between businesses and individuals. Please don't hesitate to reach out if you've got a question. If we don't know it, we'll admit that because things are changing, and we'll make a note to get back to you with that. Some general business updates that I'll give for you. Before I do that is just a bunch of resources. We're going to send these out in an email to you tomorrow that I think will be very helpful, so Adrian has everybody's email that registered, and we'll send these links. Many people at 11:15 every morning are watching the Prime Minister speak with a different announcement generally every day. The Prime Minister's website, which you'll see up here, pm.gc.ca is an excellent resource for you to get a bit more detail about what's going on. And a perfect example today was some of the positive announcements they made in support for small businesses, some changes in the right direction. You can simply click on the news release and get the details that they talked about today with the Canada Emergency Business Account and also with the Rent Assistance Program that's going to be developed for small business. Those are probably the two biggest things I've been hearing that were dealt with today, which is great. The other tip that I'll give you as you're checking out this website is to not only look at the news release, you can scroll down, and very often there's associated links, there's background documents and different things that can help you there, so it can give you some more information. So I encourage you to use that. I'm not sure if some of my colleagues from the Canadian Federation of Independent Businesses are on the call. I believe Kent may be, and I'll give kudos to them for the excellent job they've done in summarizing federal, provincial, and in some cases municipal information for small businesses, all in a one-stop shop. I would recommend, we'll send this link to you again, but they have some great resources to navigate through COVID-19, frequently asked questions, different things that are going on, and they're also surveying people to get the feedback as well. So I highly recommend you bookmark that and keep an eye as a business of that resource and what they can offer you there. Locally, the Cornwall Business Enterprise Centre. They've done a few online webinars, and kudos to them for doing that. They're giving some of the national updates you can see on their website, but there's also some other webinars that they've hosted over the course of the last few weeks on COVID-19. Managing your cash flow, marketing yourself during this challenging time, and doing some online aspects. So you can see these free webinars here, which are an excellent free resource, and I encourage you to check them out if you haven't seen them and if they apply to your situation. The next one, the Cornwall Chamber of Commerce has developed a great website, I think one of the new realities out of all this is online shopping in the short term, and because people have been using it, will become even more of a norm when we get this done. And so the Chamber of Commerce in Cornwall, whether you're a member or not, whether you're in Cornwall or not, they want to help everybody promote their business and get set up with an e-commerce platform. So you can visit that website, you can check with the Cornwall Chamber. If it's new to you, they're there to help you get up online to market some of your products, to promote yourself, and encourage you to do that. They've got, last I heard, over 75 businesses that are listed here on their website in terms of people that are using different categories and different services along there. So kudos to their leadership for doing this, but not just doing it for their members, opening it up to the entire business community. I'll also make a quick plug as well. I believe Andrew Segain is on the line. I don't know if I've met Andrew personally or not, but I feel like I know him because I see his updates every couple of days or every day on the Chamber's Facebook page. They've done a great job summarizing some of the government changes and what that means. A lot of the things you're going to need to work with your financial advisor on and in your particular circumstance, but their Facebook page for the Cornwall Chamber has been good to analyze some of the changes that are happening on a day-to-day basis with government policy and how they can affect you and what other things may not be clear yet on that. So those are the resources, and again, we will send those out to you by email tomorrow, so you have each of those links available, and you can save them as bookmarks. Today's announcements, there's a few things I wanted to talk about, we'll get to. Many of you already know that your GST, HST remittances are postponed until June, and I'll say at least there is flexibility on that. I don't have any inside scoop if it may be delayed longer, but the government has shown some flexibility here depending on the circumstance that we're in. And I'll say the same thing about the tax deadline. The income tax deadline was moved till June, and again, that may become fluid as well depending on our ability to get out and get our taxes completed or, in my case, in my office, being able to open up our volunteer income tax clinic again. So you see a lot of these deadlines, obviously stick to them or plan to stick to them, but we'll be advocating closer to the date if there do need to be further extensions, and we welcome your feedback on those, of course. The Canada Emergency Business Account. The good news came today. The biggest thing I've been hearing from small businesses, and we had several questions in today, that they have changed the payroll rule. They've gone from, as opposed to being $50,000 a payroll to $1 million on your T4 summaries from last year's taxes. They've lowered that to $20,000, and they've gone up to $1.5 billion. That is a very good step. That does resolve a significant number of comments and feedback I've heard from local businesses in the last few days. It does not address yet dividends. So business owners that may be only one or two, husband and wife or partners that take out dividends and don't use payroll, there's still some challenges with that, and we're working with the government on that. But certainly dropping that threshold is going to help people qualify for the Canada Emergency Business Account. My office has been inundated with CERB comments, calls, questions the last few days. That's the new EI-like benefit. I will just say, if you have any questions on that, please contact our office. There may be some questions tonight which I'm happy to try to answer, and I know there's some work to do on that. But again, our constituency office has been able to direct some of those things. And one of the things for the business community, we've had a few businesses that laid their employees off that once the wage subsidy, the other item that's listed on here is the emergency wage subsidy went up to 75%. Many businesses took their staff back on again. And so they issued records of employment, people were planning to apply for CERB, and we're bringing people back in. We're working with Service Canada and CRA to provide SIN numbers and details to say, hey, people are now using a different route and trying to navigate that. So if you have some challenges or things we can help you with, please let us know. The wage subsidy itself has gone from 10% to 75%. That has been a positive, and that's seen a much better uptake and interest from the business community. We work with the government on that, and they took that proposal and thankfully worked with that, which is great to see. One of the other challenges on that, and it's still not perfect. So a big comment, a feedback that I know I am still working on and many of my colleagues are, is the decline in revenue. At first, it was 30% drop in revenue. That creates a lot of challenges, and I've heard from many different sectors where 30% may not have been realized in March. The government made a change. Your revenue only had to drop 15% in March, which is a good step in the right direction. But a lot of people, insurance, real estate, law, I can go through a myriad of different industries that they get paid, they're getting paid now for deals, real estate deals or legal deals that closed months ago. So that cash flow shortage is not being realized now. They're using some of it right now, but that impact may not be felt for a couple of months. So I continue to ask you, if you're in the travel industry or somebody that has that revenue issue where it's not necessarily a drop right away, it's not a direct correlation, please send me your examples, and we're forwarding those to the government and my colleagues there and trying to get the flexibility in those programs with the wage subsidy and different things along that line. The last comment I'll make, and just in my time before passing it over to Jim, is the Canada Summer Jobs Program. We've had a lot of people reach out that are interested over the course of the summer hiring a student, which is great to see. I'll put a little asterisk that the Prime Minister has said in the next few days he's going to be announcing some further details on supporting youth and summer employment. There was an announcement earlier this week about the Canada Summer Jobs Program. The challenge there is that that program very often assists not-for-profits. For example, it might be municipalities even that do recreation programs, public pools, those types of things. There will be people that no longer can use those students because the pools won't be open, their business may not be open, but there may be others that may be open that could use a student. So Adrian, you'll see in my Facebook page, or you can reach out to my office, we're compiling a list of local businesses that may meet the criteria, that may be interested in taking on a student. The government's offered 100% coverage. So if you think that might apply to you, we're certainly collecting those names and forwarding that to the government so they can consider that for the wage subsidy. And again, when we have our next call, I hope to have some more updates on a broad program. The Canada Summer Jobs Program is good, it's got its positives, but it's a few hundred positions that are allocated in our writing, and we're talking about needing to find thousands of jobs, ideally for young people, part-time, however we can navigate that over this summer and in the fall. So more work to be done on that, but please connect with Adrian if you feel that you might be able to take a student on for part of the summer, whatever it may be. They generally try to gear it towards essential services and people that are helping those essential services, but reach out to him, and he can certainly communicate with the government your interest and the possibility of taking on a student. So with that, I apologize for talking fast, but I'll pass it over to my friend Jim to give some updates from the province of Ontario.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you for putting this on and for everybody for coming out tonight and listening in because I think that our offices have been both inundated with calls. A lot of changes that have come up. And really, our strategy really has been around is trying to slow down the spread until we have our medical and hospital facilities up to date, which is coming along rather well. Some good announcements today with some increased capacity. So with that, though, is of course the side of the business is we designated a central list of businesses to try to keep people at home, social distancing, really everything about slowing down the spread and flattening the curve. And I know Dr. Paul will talk about that. So we've had, I believe, some good success. We got the increases are pretty flat going forward. There's a lot to learn from this disease. We've learned a lot, but I guess if we look back next year, we'll probably look at this time and say that there was a lot more to learn from this whole event as we go through. So we have tightened controls and long-term care. It's been our most vulnerable spot right across the country and around the world as we, as seniors, the impact on them has been devastating in a lot of areas. We've been fairly lucky in this area. And that's a lot to do with the homes and the information we've learned from other areas, of course, but we've been able to, so far, be lucky in that fact. From the business side, we're still doing a lot of searching out, providing feedback. We're providing interest programs as far as deferring taxable and government transfers that would have to be made, normally be made, will now be most of them until the end of August without interest. So, and we really are encouraging people to go to our website. And everything is available from that side, whether you're a family or a business or a worker. We try to direct everybody there. And since we have a lot of businesses on hand tonight, we are promoting the Ontario Altogether website for businesses locally can come together to provide some of the needs of the province. We ask you to register there. We heard today that by Saturday, everybody that has registered so far will have been contacted. There's been something like in the order of 18,000 to 20,000 businesses have registered, and we're making everything from medical masks to ventilators to all sorts of personal protection equipment that we need. So it's been successful, but there's a lot of equipment, and we're just getting started. And some of the, you can imagine, product lines of the car companies turning around to produce ventilators. It takes time, but we have a lot of cooperation, a lot of orders on. So we're working hard, we'll be doing a lot more as information becomes available. We had some calls today, we'll be reaching out to our fairs and festivals over the next couple of weeks to have some town halls with businesses just to see what the issues are, what the needs are, and where we need to upgrade going forward. So we're just saying that up now. We had another call today about it and information, and the questions and the information that I'm looking for will be rolled out to us, and we'll be doing that writing by writing as we go through. So lots of stuff going on. I think we're looking, everybody's looking forward to somewhat relaxing of the rules that are in place. And we're following the, you know, the rules of, or the advice of the our medical experts are looking around, trying to catch up on just how they can protect us, protect us from this virus, what the best practices are. So we'll be following through. You know, time will only tell, a month will bring or two or three, but we're, our threat is to try to lock things down, and it's, you know, the history shows that we do that, but the time coming out of it usually is faster. So that's what we're trying to do, to get the economy up and running because that's really key about trying to get out of this is getting through this and make sure that we can get things going on the other side. So I'll stop there. I know we have a lot of questions that are addressing some of the issues we came up with today, and I think we'll hear from Dr. Paul.
Thank you, thank you, Jim, and thank you, Eric, for organizing this. I've been, I've had like this is my fourth or fifth one today, but it's the first time I'm talking to businesses, so I'll skew it a bit differently. First, I'm going to tell you that I grew up as a businessman. My father had a grocery store in Montreal, and I grew up managing it when I was 15, and I have a business degree at Harvard. So I understand the complexities and challenges that you're facing. I've lived through them as a kid, and I know the challenges, especially family businesses, smaller businesses as well. I also tell people that, you know, a healthy economy equals healthy people. And so I think it's important for me just to preface what I'm going to tell you now. This novel COVID virus is really unprecedented. It has no, there's no treatment, there's no vaccine, and it's devastating on long-term care facilities. And we expected that our vulnerable populations would be the most targeted, and it's happening. Half the deaths across Ontario, across Canada are in long-term care residences. And so fortunately, in our area, we're good. We have 16 long-term care facilities, and so far we have no outbreaks. But I think it just underscores the importance of these measures that have been taken, drastic measures comparatively speaking, unprecedented measures, emergency declarations, closures of businesses, declarations of essential businesses, closure of school, prohibition of gathering, and so on. And I think, as Jim said, the studies are shown, past experience has shown that the more aggressive we are in trying to eliminate the virus or prevent it from spreading as much as it can ordinarily without interventions, the quicker we come out of it and the quicker the economy can start to rebuild. So it's kind of, you know, short-term pain for longer-term gain. And so that's why it's important for us when we're looking at how we get out of this to look at multiple measures of, you know, what are hospitals doing, what percentage of people are positive, those type of things. And so it's going to be a complicated process going out. It's going to be a longer process going out, longer than probably our patients can tolerate because we've already been in a month now. But I think it's well worth taking our time. Our curve is starting to flatten in Ontario. We're starting to see less growth per day, and I'll show you a bit later some of our statistics, but I just want to focus in on the implications that it has on the businesses, obviously. Every day I have calls about, am I an essential business, am I not an essential business? And we're struggling, we're getting legal opinions, and we're trying to do our best to recognize that people are making livelihood, livelihood is on the line here, and we try to work with others. As you know, there are penalties for opening stores if they're not an essential business. Those are under a provincial order, and it's police and bylaw and public health officers that are taxed to enforce those. Our policy really with those type of things is to work with the businesses, educate, and so on. We don't want to be heavy-handed. We've never been heavy-handed, and we don't want to be heavy-handed at this point. The other thing that I have done, and I've done it in eastern Ontario, and this was due to popular demand, a lot of complaints, is that we were seeing a lot of the big retail stores really not having any infection prevention mechanisms, crowd control, people amalgamating and congregating, kids running all over the place. And so I actually put in what's called a Section 22 order that ordered stores, retailers to have certain things in place, Plexiglas, control of number of people that can go in, control on the parking lot, infection control, and so on. And that was really due to the multiple complaints that we've had for some of these big retailers. But I must say that we also had a tremendous amount of cooperation by these same, by other retailers. So it wasn't representative of overall, but it was significant enough that we had to intervene. I can also share with you that at the provincial level, I sit on the public health measures table that advises the Chief Medical Officer of Health looking at these measures. And I can tell you that the measures that I instituted here in eastern Ontario for the Section 22 for ordering certain precautions in stores that are open are actually going to be implemented across Ontario over the next couple of days. So because this is not a phenomenon only related to us. However, I want to underscore again that we have been getting a lot of cooperation. We've been working with different types of businesses to see, well, I can't do this. You know, I'm a smaller enterprise, you know, the bigger stores can do this. What can we do, what can we do otherwise? We work with them in that regard. So I'm anxious to get out of this as much as you are. We're seeing a bit of a light at the end of the tunnel. I'm cautiously optimistic. We're continuing with our testing, we're increasing our testing across our area. We've, just our assessment centers that are all over the eastern Ontario Health Region, we're up, we've tested almost 1,000 people, and we're testing regularly. Of interest to a lot of you here is that the testing criteria are going to expand and are going to now include essential workers. So if anybody who's working as an essential worker, be it in a grocery store, wherever they are, if they get sick, they automatically can come and get tested. That's widening our spectrum. There's also going to be, of course, we're having bigger and more rigid approaches to long-term care facilities, obviously. It's also going to talk about people working in congregate living institutions, persons working in settings like homeless shelters, prisons, correctional facilities, all that. They're going to be eligible for testing as soon as they have any symptom, and we've expanded the symptom range. Persons living in the same household as a healthcare worker or a healthcare provider or first responder. And again, certain specific priority populations, individuals who are women who are pregnant or have underlying medical conditions. So it will affect, it will access, we'll be able to test more. One of the reasons we were being held back was we had a lack of the ability of our labs to keep up with the testing, but now the labs can do 9, 10, 12,000 tests a day. We also had shortages of swabs in there, and they're being, they're being, we have, we've been replenished in an adequate way. So as far as businesses are concerned, like I said, we're going to be continuing with this approach for at least another couple of weeks. We're going to be looking at, like I said, possible next steps if things get worse, which I don't think. And as I can show you a bit later, our numbers are actually manageable in our area, and I just leave it at that.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. And actually, on one of our calls, I think, I lose track of the days here, but it was a day or two ago. Dr. Paul had a great line, and I know Jim's been doing some advocacy of light at the end of the tunnel and getting back to some semblance of normalcy. And I've, Dr. Paul, I've used your line about 10 times in the last two days, but this isn't going to, it's like a light switch. This isn't going to be turned on in one switch. It's going to be dimmer. And I love that line and that analogy there of what we need to do in terms of the businesses that are deemed perhaps best able to social distance, they can go back and those types of things. So I would encourage you guys, if you have feedback for Dr. Paul, again, Jim or myself, I get that to us, and we're certainly eyes and ears to that. Adrian, I think we'll go to questions now in the interest of time to try to get through at least half hour, if not more, of questions that you've got. Adrian, I'll just ask you if you could give the detail of how to raise your hand on the app again, just as a reminder for people.
All right, so for those of you that joined us maybe a little bit late, but if you are on the desktop, if you scroll down to where you see the participants tab, you're able there to raise your hand to ask a question. So we're going to to alternate between hands that are raised here and questions that have come in. Now, if you're dialing in by phone and you need to raise your hand, it's star nine. If you hit star nine, then I'll be able to unmute you. You'll be able to ask your question and we will go from there. So Eric, did you want to do a live question first or are we going to go with a written?
I'll go with a written question here first. And I, we've actually got a couple of those in by email and I'll direct them to Jim and maybe Dr. Paul can comment. People from the gardening and landscaping industries talking about if they're deemed essential or not, if they're working alone or not, what's allowed, what your thoughts are on that. And if you see a light at the end of the tunnel, is that something that may be considered on the next, if there's an opening wave, would they be considered? We've got a couple of questions on that. So we'll start with Jim and then go to Dr. Paul.
So we brought this one back and of course, the goal, I was talking to our minister of agriculture when he was fighting the battle of the cabinet tables, the goal is to get the jobs down, the number of jobs so we keep people at home. But saying that, there is a realization that landscaping has a place. It likely in a lot of cases can be done by providing social distancing. So I'm talking to Dr. Paul today, we're both going to bring it back through our different channels back to the, the premier's office about opening that up. But of course, today and the next couple of weeks is probably not an issue because there's not a lot of grass around here. But the, there will be something that will become an issue very quickly once we get into another couple of weeks of warm weather. So more to come. We think that that it has an opportunity to open up sooner than later.
Dr. Paul?
Yeah, I, Jim and I spoke a couple of hours ago about this. I've, I've had a lot of requests from, from others, Hoxbury and so on. And I actually got a legal opinion and technically landscapers do not fall under the essential category. And so we, we, we've, I've actually spoken to some of the ministry people. For example, we were asked yesterday on the public health measures table about community gardens because they, they, they do fruit, you know, food and stuff. And we're going to ask for an exemption for that to be, to be included as an essential service. And I've also put forward some propositions as to pending appropriate, you know, cooperation in terms of infection control. Can landscapers eventually start working moving forward? Because again, I was telling Jim that, you know, the, the essence of what we're trying to do, yes, we're trying to keep people at home, but at the same time, I also want to balance it with people having, making a living. And so if we can, you know, if they can work remotely, I mean remotely, for example, you know, go, go drive, two people drive separately, do their work, leave, don't, don't go into a home, you know, those type of things. I think those things we should, we should start looking at those or at least as next step is how we widen, how we open up the restrictions is to start looking at ways that we can promote the businesses. Again, using strict controls, which, which we can help them with in terms of being able to have protocols in place to, at the same time, have them, you know, deliver the services, continue their business, yet maintain as, as little as exposure as possible in the community. So it's balanced.
Quick supplemental on garden centers. I have a couple of notes here for businesses in the next few weeks, but normally the ordering in one case, a quarter of a million dollars of orders for garden centers. Do you see any special provisions on that or ways that they can mitigate that? I know Dr. Paul or Jim, if you have a comment specifically on that retail garden next there.
It's something that's being discussed now. Of course, if you're providing agricultural supplies, you can through ordering, I think vegetables, that type thing are excluded. So you, you do have to get them delivered or curbside, but there is a place for provisioning of food on the agricultural side.
Noted. All right. Adrian, we can go to the call, the participant list?
Sure. We'll, we'll take our first one of our first-hand raised by was, it's Richard Waldorf. So Richard, your mic is unmuted. Go ahead.
I talked to the Ministry of Health a couple of days ago about the, my business involves the manicuring of lawns and that kind of thing. And I talked to the ministry and the gentleman told me that there was no issue with mowing lawns, that that was not a very important item because of the fact that we can get rid of insects, ticks and that kind of stuff by keeping that kind of work done. How does that go with the landscaping? Is that considered part of the landscaping group or am I separated or is my business kind of separate from that?
Well, my understanding would be that would be part of landscaping. So right at this point, it stopped. We are looking at the very near future though, to make some changes, you know, as the certain businesses, as Dr. Paul said, that can be done without any close contacts. And I think that that's one. So, but it is a work in progress at this point. So it is officially on the list of businesses that can't be done.
And the other issue too is I don't know who you spoke with at the ministry, but you know, my point would be at some point, you're going to have to cut the grass to diminish Lyme disease. So we're going to have to balance where it becomes essential, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
We probably have a couple of weeks at least before lawns become an issue. Looking out of mine, it's maybe, I'd be lucky with a couple of weeks.
The snow, the snow was here this morning and was gone this afternoon. Let's see how long that lasts for. Going to the next question here, I see one from Leslie Thompson, who's involved with the Community Futures Development Corporation locally. I'm not sure if she's on the line or not, but the CFDC has been asking for, and they've done an excellent job actually with allocating a million dollars in small business loans in our community. Those dollars were taken up very quickly in, within a few days of COVID-19 and at mid-March taking into effect. So she's just wondering if there's an update from us at the federal level. I will say this is something we're advocating for of where, if you're not familiar with the CFDC, I have positive things to say about Leslie and her team there and their ability to get dollars quickly out the door to small business, basically like the Kennedy Emergency Business Account, the SEBA loan as well. And they have an ability to do that locally and knowing the local context. The federal government has gone kind of back and forth a little bit. They've said there's an announcement coming a few weeks ago. We haven't seen something yet. But yes, that is on the radar. Banks are now, we were like, opened up credit unions. That was an issue where on these business emergency loans, it was only the large banks, not the credit unions. We got that ruled, will have open to credit unions, which positively impacted many businesses. But the CFDC, Leslie, yes, is another tool. We've had a few conversations, not getting an answer yet as to why they can't get that out, but that is something we're continuing to, to push for. Just a couple of other things on that point of proposals that my colleagues and I have put out constructively with the government. And I know conversations are going back and forth is on a few things. I, I spoke with a local business owner this afternoon. On RRSPs, we had some people that have had cash flow problems that took withdrawals from their RRSPs to help with cash flow. And obviously they've been penalized for it. So one of the things we're advocating for and I'm encouraging you, if you have those examples, the person very quickly sent it to me today, is where if we can advocate during a certain window, if cash flow is an issue in six, eight months from year, a year from now, when things even out, if they can repay that without penalty, because normally again, there's a penalty that you have to do for withdrawing. So that's on the radar with RRSPs. And I know there's several businesses that have done that. And the other plug I'm just going to give, which might be a segue to our next question with Eleanor, I see. But I know Irene Cameron and Matthew Cameron, Matthew is the owner of the Upper Canada Ciderie Company. They've reached out to Jim about some red tape rules about cideries. And I think it's called the five acre rule and the retail aspects with the AGCO. If you have these red type items, get them to us so we can push for them. I know Jim's been working with the minister responsible for AGCO and, and economic development. So keep those certainly coming.
Just to add to that, we, on the cider issue, it is an anomaly and we talked about it today at our meeting. So I think that they're looking at that and you're kind of unique and you're being penalized for no good reason. So.
Noted, but keep those examples coming. Adrian, we'll go to Eleanor's question online.
Sure. Sure. All right. Eleanor, I'm going to be unmuting your mic. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll make sure no dogs are barking in the background. Thank you very much, Eric, Dr. Paul and Jim, for this wonderful opportunity this evening. I actually was on Ontario Soil and Crop just right before this call and economic recovery is a very important thing to be thinking about. I mean, yes, we're written the thick of things, but partnerships and tourism. A lot of people know the work that I've been promoting, which is agritourism and agriculture is paramount to this region. Jim, one thing I've noticed on the Ontario website is that the farms are generally classified by the farm business registration number. And there's folks like myself here at Springfield that are under the exemption because we are transitioning from traditional methods to the organic. So I was just hoping you might look at that as an exemption to add that we are a bona fide farm under MPAC as well. But further tourism and partnerships are going to be the way to the future. Is there something that, Dr. Paul, you've been wonderful in working with North Glengarry, for example, I'm one of the community kitchen folks. We've got to really get through to the next sort of year and, and 2021. And if, if we could really consider looking at how to get agritourism, take it from a talking point to actually a reality. So that agriculture, people are talking about baking bread, everything it seems to be about local food. How do we now make sure partnerships are built between the restaurants and Pitt Street and farms like ours or other farms? Like I saw my friend Mike McGillery, of course, the ciderie. There's so many great businesses here. We've got to start maybe a task force for this region to move it forward. Maybe one of you would comment. Thank you.
Thanks Eleanor. Jim?
Well, and the, of course, the agritourism certainly is in jeopardy for this year, at least for the summertime. But it's a way of changing some of the regulations, generally health regulations of her, what are really stopping a lot of what you're asking. And I guess it's a matter of setting that, that balance up and, and looking at, you know, what can be produced locally and what can be transferred over to the restaurants and stores. You know, that's really something that public health is, controls in the area based on the regulations in the province. But we're, we're, you know, there is some slack that could be, you know, to allow some of this to go on. And it's something that on a going forward basis, we could look at, you know, or maybe not over the next six months, but after that, as things calm down from the virus.
Noted. Thank you, Eleanor. Thank you, Jim. On that, we'll segue to a, a question online that came from Noreen Haye Gervais from Stonecrop Acres. Hello to Noreen and Mark, I believe they're on the call, talking about actually the positive announcement today. So it's glad to see an example of a business now that would, with that change in payroll threshold, would allow, they're a perfect example, they noted there. And when restrictions starting to loosen, are supports being considered to help restart and incentivize tourism and SD and G in our area? And are some of the existing and active tourism funding programs and projects under consideration for 2020 funding still being viewed as valuable to help with the tourism restart? And then again, kind of talking about Ontario, Quebec and some campaigns that can happen when we get back to normal. Jim, I'll have you comment and then I'll, I'll pick it up with another supplemental question from tourism and.
Well, the tourism side, it's, it was a main question that came up today. It's all about the timing and where we're going to go with this. There's all kinds of estimates and just how long this will go through and it impacts our, our fairs, our festivals and all the small tourist industry that goes along with that. So we're looking at, over the next few weeks, we're going to be setting up roundtables in each area to, to talk to the, the various businesses, tourism, hotels, just to see what their main issues are and say the opportunity for us to, to help out. It really comes down in a lot of cases, just when we can lighten up the, the regulations enough to allow events that are, are large enough to, for, you know, the, maybe not the, the largest, like the Highland Games, but you know, events that maybe would attract a few thousand people when that would happen. We just don't have a good answer yet. So it is a question we're being asked a lot. And I don't think anybody has that answer yet. But we want to get back to, you know, getting the economy going. People do need that socializing. So we realize there's more than just the economic side of it. But we want to make sure we put it in, in, in the step that doesn't undo a lot of the stuff we've already done.
Thank you. And as a supplemental to that, Carol Johnson, from President of the Chesterville Agricultural Society that runs the Chesterville Fair, I had asked the same thing. So on fairs, Jim, you just mentioned there to address Carol, who's on the call, that there will be some local roundtables of local fairs. Just from my end at a federal level, actually I'll mention this is that, I was saying this to Jim earlier, Lisa McLeod has confirmed that the regular grants given to fairs this year will still happen. They can help stabilize them throughout the year if they aren't able to run or that it's modified, whatever the form and the timeline may be, those grants stay in place, which I think is positive. I had a teleconference today, Zoom meeting with a café, which is the Canadian Association of Fairs and Exhibitions. And I'm, I'm reaching out to Francis Drouet and I, my friend from Glengarry Prescott Russell, we're texting back and forth and talking tonight about reaching out on a larger scale as well from, to the build on Noreen's point and onto Carol's point about fairs and tourism, about how we can get some plans in place now to help stabilize that industry over the summer, as I think mass gatherings and travel may be restricted to make sure that if it's 2021, we're ready, that everybody's still there and ready to go. So minimizing those impacts and what some of those measures could be. So some great notes and I'll make sure Noreen, that Jim gets that comment as well. And I will comment, you talk about locally, I do see Nick Sagan and from SD and JC, Bob Peters from the city of Cornwall, both are involved with economic development and tourism. And I know they're listening to that as well and will be developing, I'm sure, local plans when this gets all said and, and done.
Okay. We'll go next question. I've got a hand raised here from Nia Chu. Nia, go ahead. Are your, is your mic muted there? Hold on, let's get you, go ahead.
Hi. Hi. Thanks, Eric, this afternoon. And he actually nailed the pronunciation of my name. So it's Nia Chug. Thanks for having me. I have some questions about the wage subsidy and in terms of the timing of the flow, the cash flow. I know that the portal's not open yet. I've been watching with bated breath to see when it'll be opened. Is it still sitting in Senate for Senate approval? Has it been, or has it been passed? Are we, are we hoping that the portal's going to be open soon? I also have a question about payroll remittances. I can't seem to wrap my head around the CPP and the, the forgiveness of the mid-month payment, because that's kind of the, the balloon payment for most businesses, the 15th of the month.
Great questions. So, so a few of them, the legislation for the business wage subsidy has been passed. It's gone through the House of Commons and gone through the Senate. The issue is a setting up an online portal for tens of thousands of people to apply and to do that. The wage subsidy is a little more complex than the SERB benefit where it's your approved $2,000 out the door. This gets into a bit more complicated numbers and percentage in those verifications that your business has dropped 15% in March and 30% and how we're counting that. So the delay is not a legislative delay. It's more how can we create a system? A quick just background FYI for people, this is nerdy Eric here, I apologize. The Auditor General 10 years ago in 2010 said that the government's online system for EI was a critical failure in 2010. That system's still in place today. So whenever you saw this emergency wage, sorry, the, the SERB benefit of the $2,000 a month, the government basically scrapped EI, put that computer system aside and did it through CRA My account to process them very quickly. My understanding is, is that this wage subsidy, again, it's getting that online portal built. That's going to be the wage in the delay there. We've made some proposals to the government, haven't heard anything on it yet, about allowing individuals to go through banks where if your bank manager can give you the approval, yes, you meet it, the bank can pay you out and the government would pay the bank back. That to me might get the money quicker in terms of some of these things. But I know the portal's ongoing now. So we're waiting on that. And I've heard from a few businesses that, yeah, the issue is, is that you apply and you get the money later. We need to tighten that timeframe up. One of the positives is when we went from 10% to 75% coverage, a big step that helped a lot of people decide to keep staff on. One of the other positive changes is you will be pre-approved type thing. So it's not like you're going to pay everybody and then all of a sudden wait and realize. Now, I understand some of the retro might be a challenge, but they're working on a timely response to make sure, yes, you qualify and there's not going to be an issue four months down the road where you've kept everybody on, paid them thinking you're going to get this and you don't have it. So those are some of the things we're working on. The CPP The CPP and EI, that's a very good question. I was asked that today and to be honest, I don't have that question answer. I will get that and I'm hoping to do this roundtable next week. But I will include this on my Facebook updates, my email updates, and I'll post something that way and announce that next week or over the next couple of days when I get that. I know the GST and the HST has been pushed to June. The other payroll stuff, I want to get a firm answer just on that. So I'll be sure to share that with everybody on this email list and online. We've met on Twitter before and now we've talked twice today. There we go.
No, we're best friends.
All right, thank you very much. Adrian, are there any other questions waiting?
If anyone wants to raise their hand, great time to do it right now because there's nobody in the queue.
While we're doing that, I'll go to Dr. Paul if he's still on the line. I'm not sure if he is or not. Yes, he is, yep. Dr. Paul, there was a question here from Avanmore, from a business in Avanmore, more to do with the testing protocol. If you could talk on that briefly. With staff working at a palliative care home in SD and G, one of the staff was potentially exposed as a coworker and another in a long-term care agency tested positive. The staff wanted to get tested to rule out her exposure and it was declined because she's not showing symptoms. She was told just to self-isolate for 14 days. Could you talk about some of the testing protocols? I know some of that's changed in the last few days. I don't know if that's opened up. I know the premier's been talking about that. Could you address that perhaps, Dr. Paul, a little bit?
Sure. It's a bit, it's a bit complicated, but I'll try to, I'll try to explain it. We know that if you've been exposed to the virus, you can develop symptoms anywhere between 14 days within that exposure. So let's say you were exposed to the virus today and I tested you tomorrow and you'd be negative. And then if I let you go back to work at the 13th day, you got sick and infected people. So that's why we're, we have to be very careful with testing people who don't have symptoms. When you don't have symptoms, the negative test doesn't mean that we've ruled it out. So that's what some people don't understand, you know, oh, I tested negative and go back to work, those type of things. Obviously, you're talking about very specific scenarios of high-risk individuals. So essentially, we would test an individual if that person was a contact. And if he's working in a high-risk environment, we would not allow that individual to go back to work for 14 days. However, there are some exceptions in hospital settings and so on. For example, a brain surgeon has to operate. And if he's not context, what we might do, you might allow that individual to go and work, but with all the personal protective equipment. So that, and no symptoms. But if anybody develops symptoms, you see what's going on in these vulnerable areas, we have to exclude them. So that's why it's not as simple. And even if we had the test, the rapid test that's going to come out very soon, if we test somebody, let's say I was exposed to this person a couple of days ago and I tested today, I'd be negative, but it doesn't ensure that I won't be positive 10 days later. So that's why it's a bit complicated. That's why it's that 14-day period.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Paul. Next question here by, Jim had a comment there, sorry Jim.
So before you have symptoms, do they know if you can spread it? Do they don't know that yet?
We don't know that. We're learning that people can be what's called pre-symptomatic positives and very mild symptoms. So what we've learned is that unlike what we used to think, maybe two months ago or a month ago, you can have very subtle symptoms a day or two before you actually develop overt symptoms. So like headaches, fatigue. But so now we've expanded it. So anybody that is in the list that will be testing, if they have a headache or fatigue or any symptom, we're going to test them now. But it's still theoretical. Just because I test you, because the test picks up your RNA in your throat, it's a very sensitive test. It doesn't mean that that virus is enough, you have enough virus in you to spread to others, but we're not taking any chances. So right now, if we have somebody that's exposed who develops the symptoms today, we're going to go back 48 hours, even though that individual was well, to ensure where that person was and not take a chance that he may or not have been infected. Personally, as a microbiologist, I don't think they're infectious. Even if you have a positive test before symptoms, I don't think you have enough virus to be able to spread to somebody else.
Thank you for that. Yeah, Adrian, next on the line.
Another question here from Mayor Bernadette Clement. Bernadette, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good to see everyone. Thank you to the MP and MPP and Dr. Paul for this. A couple of things. Jim, I just did a Facebook Live and the landscaping issue is a big one. I'm going to be following up with you on that. I don't know if people are going to want to wait till, you know, the end of the next emergency date, which is May 12. So that's a big issue, the marina, the boat launches. Springtime is here and people are starting to feel hopeful, which is good. We're staying on point with the message around physical distancing. But that whole landscaping issue, it's big even from a municipal perspective. Second point, we are looking at the city at whether we can municipally do a little bit of stimulus for local businesses. The MP brought up the point of possibly using CIP funds to do something like that. So I just want to let the businesses in Cornwall know that we are looking at that and try to be inspired by what's going on in Eastern Ontario around our own sort of municipal mini-stimulus program to come for local businesses. Number three, Dr. Paul, can you explain again about how testing is linked to economic recovery? We're not going to get to economic recovery or start to reopen our businesses unless we're on top of testing. And maybe you could comment on rapid testing and where we're at with that.
Two things. Testing will, the more we test, the more reliable, I could say, well, we only have X number of cases and we're good to go. So the more we test, the better gauge of activity in the community. Because probably when we're testing 10 people and then test positive, we're probably missing the 20 or 30. So that's kind of a theoretical thing. So the more we test, the better, I can say confidently that, yeah, you know what, our curve is flat, it's going down. And we can, but we have to couple that, not only with the testing, but I'll, well, I'll talk about the instant test later, but in the flow of how we talk about measuring or gauging or finding a trigger of when we could recover, right? Testing is one of them. Blood testing would be another one. Blood test is a test that we would do on an individual because that would be quite sensitive as well. Will tell us that that individual has been exposed to the virus in the past and indeed maybe, maybe have immunity. So that's another one that we'll be doing. We're also going to couple it, I don't want to lose track and I don't want people just to think it's just testing. Because I know the premier talks about testing, but it's not the only thing as well. We have to look at numbers, number of cases, we have to, number of ICU, number of people in a hospital. What's our, it's a whole combination, but certainly testing is an important one. Now, the instant test itself, to me, will just tell us right away whether or not a person has it. If a person had, if it's positive, we believe it, by the way. If it's negative, we'll send it to the lab because that's the way these things work. But it helps us more in identifying very quickly if somebody's positive. So particularly in higher-risk situations, long-term care facilities, it'd be very important for us to get rapid diagnoses. And very important in rural areas, even ours, it takes us sometimes a day or two for, believe it or not, for couriers to bring, you know, the swabs to Ottawa. So it will help us more rapidly make a diagnosis. But the testing itself is one of the parameters we're going to use. So the more people are tested and the percentage, we're also going to look at the percentage. So initially, when we first started testing people, 1% of the people were positive. At peak, it was about 15%. Now it's about 10%. So we're going to gauge that. So that's why it's important to test, but it's not the only gauge that we're going to be using.
We'll go to a question here about email from a mortgage broker. Has there been any discussion about financial relief for those of us that are self-employed and still working on whatever files come in, but don't have as much business as we normally would for this time of the year? In addition, is there discussion about financial relief for my type of business that does our work one to four months before actually being paid for the work we've already completed? In other words, my pay for March, April and May is based on the work I completed in December, January and February? These COVID restrictions are affecting my May, June, July and August income. So I don't believe there's any currently financial assistance for this future difference. So that's an excellent question and builds on two comments I want to make. Is those are the types of things we want to get examples on where in, to the government's effort of trying to get dollars out through the wage subsidy in the emergency response benefit, trying to make it as cookie cutter in a way to get it quickly implemented was done. But again, there's people that fall through those cracks. The example or analogy I use is we've laid the floor, now we've got to fill in the cracks in that floor to make it safe. So different industries, again, mortgage, insurance, legal. I've been speaking to some lawyers in the same way as well in terms of cash flows and how that work. If you would please get me your examples from your industry, we're forwarding those along and using those to build the case for some flexibility. The other thing I will raise on the CERB, and I know different businesses have raised this today, is that they've now allowed people to make $1,000 a month while collecting the CERB. A step in the right direction, but I know many of my colleagues who are hearing from businesses across the country, people don't want to go back to work at all for fear of going over that and then losing the entire benefit. So many businesses are saying, I might need somebody more than $1,000 a month, it might be $1,500 a month. So they're not getting anybody at all when they're trying to balance all these things out. So just as an example of something that I think at a high level, one of the things I think we could take a look at in enhancing flexibility is doing what happened back in 2009, 2010 in the last economic issue that our country had, the global economic recession, was that when it came to EI in this type of program, for every dollar you earned in income, perhaps you would lose only 50 cents of your CERB. And those types of calculations allow people to go back to work and have that flexibility with their employer. So again, that's something that we're going to work on, on that. Of the industries that are kind of falling through the cracks in the wage subsidy and the CERB qualifications. And also the other angle of trying to get people back to some aspect of work part-time that we can do that on. So is there another hand up? I believe there is Adrian.
There is.
And just a note on time, it's 9:06 now. We'll go to about 9:15 or so. And again, if I didn't get to your question tonight, our office will follow up tomorrow with Jim and Dr. Paul through other questions to connect you with. And again, our plan, I believe, is to do this in the next week at least, Jim and I. Dr. Paul, of course, is welcome, but to do this regularly. So if we don't answer your question tonight, we're going to keep doing this.
I think for the next meeting, we're going to have to give a 60-second limit to the MP and MPPs and then I'm going to mute their mics.
There you go, fair, fair.
Okay, our next question is from Jason Grant. Jason, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? So I have a two-part question here. So my question pertains to potential for stimulus infrastructure spending package. Infrastructure spending has always been a tool the government's used to help with economic downturns to create additional employment. Will the government, the federal and provincial and municipal governments be announcing an infrastructure spending package at some point this year to help create more employment opportunities in the construction sector? Also, will construction companies be eligible to receive compensation for the additional health and safety measures required for contracts issued prior to the coronavirus pandemic?
Jim, do you want to start with that?
Well, I know we're trying to get as much infrastructure built and I think we have over, well, over 200 projects that we've dominated and as part of the federal, provincial, municipal plan. We're just waiting for confirmation by the Peds. It was interrupted by the election and a few things, but they've been there for a while. But we're looking at any program because we see that the building of infrastructure not only is needed, but it also generates a lot of economic spinoff when you look at an economic benefit. If you look at trying to get money back into the economy. So it is something we're looking at and giving a priority to as far as spending going through. So hopefully you won't see any curtailing of any of the infrastructure plans going through other than the time delay that this, you know, virus has created. But we're hoping already some infrastructure projects are allowed to go through. We see work on the 401 going through and we'll hope to see that expanded very shortly.
All right, and quickly on that, from the federal government, yes, I won't leak anything or break any news, but the federal government, for example, has got back, I believe, at the city of Cornwall this week on an application. I'll let them announce the news, but as an example, they're starting to roll that out. So these applications are approved in time for construction season and getting that started. And yes, stimulus is something the federal government's already having a conversation and asking municipalities for other in addition turnkey shovel-ready projects. The thing I always say is any program when it comes to stimulus has to meet the three Ts. Has to be timely, has to be targeted and has to be temporary in terms of that. But yes, from the construction industry, there'll be that. Jim, did you want to touch base on the question about construction and the extra measures needed in place for safety or social distancing?
Well, of course, your projects, we're going back and talking to, we're allowed, of course, residential, small residential because of the ease of working separately. We do have inspectors going out to make sure they're following through on that. We really only scaled it back, but the higher large commercial where it was essentially, you know, you're talking 100 workers on a site at a time was almost impossible to get that social distancing. Now, that hasn't stopped forever, but, you know, we're looking at, I think, right now is around May the 12th. I think the current restrictions are in. And that's, you know, after that, you know, it's a rolling timeframe, but we're hoping that that's probably a good date for at least some of those businesses where social distancing can be put in place and our work can be done with shifts. And there are things that can be done to allow these infrastructure projects to continue.
We'll go to the next one on the line, Adrian.
Okay, our next question is from Michael McGilvery. Go ahead, Michael. Your mic is unmuted.
Good evening. Thank you, gentlemen, for putting this together. It's great to see leadership being, getting this type of information out to the businesses. My question's with respect to the food supply chain. And we're seeing a lot of disruption and a lot of deficiencies in the current supply chain. What are each of you going to be looking at as far as improving food security and creating more of a local or regional type system? So basically from the regulatory point of view.
Jim, do you want to start on that and then I'll follow up?
Just kind of a follow-up question. How's the supply chain being affected at this time? You mean as far as getting to the grocery stores?
Yeah, well, we're seeing, we're seeing empty shelves and basically the system can't handle a surge in demand, right? Luckily, we're having, we're seeing a lot of local small businesses stepping up and supplying food to consumers. Just want to see what we're going to be putting in place to increase the robustness of that system.
Well, my experience and what I've heard is that's not really a problem. It is in certain projects, like products, like toilet paper was almost impossible to get for a while. It's starting to come back. But there are some projects, products like can sanitizers, certain cleaning products. Some of that's being held up by Health Canada, so trying to get these products approved. I know I hear in our calls that we have suppliers that are willing to make that. Breweries that are making alcohol, turning their product line around to make can sanitizers. But it still has to go through some testing through Health Canada to be approved. But that should be coming through very quickly. And, you know, hopefully, I haven't seen shortages in the, I've been getting around a little bit, checking with some of the local suppliers and that doesn't seem to be a problem just yet.
All right, and I'll just say if there's sector-specific or issue-specific things, Michael, that you do see, get them to us by all means and we can work backwards and see how that goes. There was a question in, by email, similar to supply chain is with beef processing. That is an issue with CFIB inspectors and deeming essential workers. Our, my colleagues that are involved in the agricultural committee made a request this week that all agricultural services, which includes supply chain and food supply chain, be deemed essential. And that's across the country and not so much on a provincial level to help with that, just to make sure there aren't any barriers. So I've heard from beef, the beef industry, that with inspections in some of the processing plants, there've been some issues there. There's some other ongoing things there with the government overview that's creating some hiccups. I know we're on that and trying to get some answers on that. But I would encourage if there is a specific item or something within that supply chain, food supply chain, it's an issue, get that to us and we'll follow up certainly.
Because it's not a problem provincially, they're deemed as essential, so.
All right, next question, there's two more questions, I believe, online. We'll take those two questions and then perhaps we'll do a wrap up.
All right. So our next question is from Bill McGimsey. Bill, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. And yeah, good evening, everyone. Dr. Paul, I don't believe you got around to answering Mayor Clemm's question on landscaping. There's also some other low-level events such as golf and boat launches that, you know, I drive by the Walmart and I routinely see 100 people lined up 60 feet apart. And I wonder how that is less risky than two people sitting on a boat. And I wonder how that is less risky than two people sitting on a boat in the middle of St. Lawrence and/or two people in 100 acres of a golf course. And again, the landscaping.
I agree with you. I think that there are ways that you can work around it. I don't want 100 people in a golf club, though. That's another issue. So you, you have to convince me that you can do that and keep a golf course open. Launches are another thing as well. It's where we want to avoid congregation of a lot of people. So that's the bottom line. I've been, I've been now lobbying ministry to look at landscaping because I do believe that it could be done safely. And when we are going back into removing restrictions, those are the type of things that I'm going to look at right away to say, okay, those things are safe, you can do those and so on. So I do agree with you. But the premise is we have to have built-in kind of reassurances or approaches that, that still permit that social distancing. So I, I, I agree with what you're saying. And that's why I've brought the landscaping issue to the ministry.
And I'll see, this is an example, this is an example to build on that, Bill, is I've challenged some people I was speaking to. I see Rory McClellan from Summer Heights on the call. Hello, Rory, as an example there. I, I would start to think about in cases like golf courses that may be, there may be a way to get to yes in terms of opening up and turning that dimmer switch on. Start writing down some proposals and perhaps going back and forth with some other colleagues. What are things that you can do for social distancing? For example, maybe not opening a clubhouse of doing online payments for golf registration or somebody out of hole number one with the Plexiglas and maybe not doing a beer cart in terms of, you know, not transmitting. Start to think of some of those ways that you can get to yes. Dr. Paul's been very good that way as an example of that might be some good preliminary conversations. When the time comes to turn that dimmer switch up, there's some conversations and some food for thought that's already taken place. So that might be an idea that way.
Well, the other part is perhaps walking only as opposed to being two people in a cart. If you limit it to walkers, you, you don't open the clubhouse. But again, that would be better answered by Rory and people can, who would tell you whether it's financially viable to operate a golf course without having the clubhouse open or not.
That's the, that's the whole point. That's the whole point. I recognize that.
I think the issue is there was a critical need to get some separation in place. Recreation was, was an easy one to deem as non-essential. You know, I look at the numbers today and they're talking about the way they, the healthcare system, we've more than doubled some of the acute critical beds or, or just by the end of the month. A lot of this stuff will be in by the end of April, which is another two weeks away. So I think it gives them a chance then to evaluate where they are with facilities. We're lucky, we're not, I would say, I hate to say this, but even close to the current facilities we have. We have been able to contain this much better than we thought we could have when you looked around some of the places around the world. That's good and bad because now you have to wonder how many people have not been exposed out there. But we, we have been able to ramp up. We've, we've got a large number of respirators came in and double that to come in the next two weeks. So by the end of April, we'll be able to look at that. And there will be some, and I think Dr. Paul said today, something, some, at least most forms of landscaping will likely be able to go ahead. Businesses like that, we're looking at also businesses that can deliver to the curb. Why can't, if you can do that, why would that be restricted to any kind of business? If you can, like I went to Staples the other day, you call up that you're outside and they deliver your package to your trunk. It shouldn't matter if that's a florist or whatever business, hardware, anything should be able to be done like that if they can practice it until, you know, we can reduce it even more. So, you know, marine is the same thing. It's a form of recreation. We'll see some changes to that. But at the end, we don't want to have a wave come through that really, where we see the large numbers like we've seen not very far from here, just in New York State, which is our neighbor. And that's, that's what happens when you get behind.
We'll go to Martha next.
All right, Martha, go ahead, you are unmuted.
Martha Wood, are you there? Are you having a connection? Maybe we'll go to Jason next. We'll come back to you, Martha, and try again after.
All right, Jason, your mic is open.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Excellent. With a lot of businesses, small businesses such myself, working from home, I really appreciate you putting these things together, but I had to connect through my phone today because the rural internet in the area is, is substandard. I'm wondering if there's any projects to update and upgrade the rural internet. I think I'm only sitting about maybe three kilometers from you right now, Eric. And I have just awful internet. And it is a critical tool in my business. And I'm sure it's a critical tool for many people as well as a critical thing to keep people occupied while this whole thing is going on.
Yes, I would agree. I'm, I'm in the suburbs of South Mountain too suffering from the same quality of internet. Just for an example, I've had two, I've been on Zoom calls, I think 20 hours, 25 hours in the last three days and I've been kicked off two or three times. So I would agree with that. A couple of things I would encourage you to look at is the Eastern Ontario Regional Network. That is something that is a federal, provincial, municipal program. It was rolled out in large a few years ago to give, enhance the level of service. But the challenge we've had with that frankly is that the capacity and demand has gone up astronomically as well. So it certainly did set a floor. And I know there's other plans when it comes to cell capacity, internet coverage to improve that. One of the other things that we've done, I've been living in our family's business in South Mountain. Long story, back in my parents' basement again. But one of the things we've done here is we use Storm Internet, for an example. We've gone and called back to say, look, before we were using, we had X number of people here. Now we have more in the office, more demand. They've split our service and they've done some other things for residential homes that are now maybe using more commercial levels and seeing some access with that. I know it still is an issue in rural areas, but perhaps check with some other providers and say, normally I'm a resident service, but do you have a commercial package or commercial upgrades that may be available? I have heard some positives from some businesses that have been able to get some better service just by knowing that their demands are changing as their work remotely changes as well. So definitely something I'm on and living first-world and firsthand experience right now. Jim?
Yeah, just to say that, that plan or that program from the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus has been funded by both the province and the federal government. They're just going through there now. We're, I would hope that by the three years, all of Eastern Ontario will have great cell and internet service under that program. So they're, they're ramping up now. A lot of it is tied around the new, next generation of cell service that is starting to roll out this year, moving that out into the rural areas very quickly. So that'll basically give, you know, fiber optic types speeds really over the, your cell and over, of course, and then you can use that on TV or, or wherever. So it's a matter of developing that quickly and they're well into that.
And just to wrap up, Jason, I was saying to somebody today, there's been no better way to build momentum for better rural internet service in Canada than living in self-isolation for more than a month now. I think people have seen firsthand that. And I think there's certainly going to be momentum coming from it to, to create a new normal and a new level in rural, not only in our area, but across the country. So definitely well noted as well. Last, we'll go to Rory and then we'll wrap up.
All right, Rory, go ahead, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Eric, Jim and Dr. Paul. I guess I really didn't have much of a question. I had more of a comment. I want to thank Bill McGimsey for pointing out golf. But there's absolutely, we've been studying how we can offer the social distance with that, which I think is going to be very easy for us to do. We've got about 35 different ways of offering that to our customers. And not only that, we've realized that golf is going to be a great release for a lot of the people and creating physical and mental health by social distancing on the golf course. We have 37 touch points, I think, that we can do to keep people separated at the golf course.
Well, and I think, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, well, those are the type of things that we need to have in mind as we, as we, you know, roll back on some of these restrictions. Because we just can't say, okay, I got a call the other day. Can we do proms in May, you know, at schools? You know, I'm not going to allow 400 kids to get together in May, right?
Come on, Dr. Paul.
You know, no, so, no, but what I'm saying is we got to be logical about it. So those are the type of approaches that we need to know about as we reopen things. And, you know, and because you'll, you'll start with that and then you can start opening the clubhouse or maybe take food out or those type of things. So that, to me, that's important.
Well, we, we certainly realize that the clubhouse is going to have to be, have to be changed and closed and even club storage and locker facilities and all that sort of thing. But we've got such a short window to make, make or break a season. And every day that goes by, it's getting shorter. Same goes with the landscaper.
Which I think is a good segue that as we, as we kind of wrap up here tonight is, is homework for businesses as well. And Rory, that's a perfect example. Start to think now and start to put on paper, in, in a document, ways that you could practice social distancing while having your business open. As Jim mentioned, if it's retail like Staples or a florist, if it's a golf course, start to have those things down so they can start to work with Dr. Paul and say, we could be maybe the first phase, second phase, something where it's a little bit more turnkey-ready. So the leadership that you could show or help in your industry or your business, I think can go a long way to making things when the time is right to be able to go on and maximize that. So that might be something for people, different people to consider as they, as they go along that way.
We could provide that list for Dr. Paul tomorrow. And we've got it all ready, all ready put together.
Well, thank you for that. I, I sit on the provincial committee that will decide at these public health measures. So it's good for me to know that. Thank you.
And with that, I think, are we good, Adrian? Do we have anybody else? I think we're, we went through our list.
The queue is clear right now.
All right. Any closing comments, Jim or Dr. Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, get up to, you know, we've, we've got a, you know, had some good success in what we've done so far. We've been able to, at least in area and read across the province generally is to lower that curve. And a lot of that is, you know, staying home, you're practicing your social distancing, the washing your hands, learning about face coverings, getting to the facts about the COVID-19. And we have on our website, if you go to Ontario.ca forward slash COVID-19, you'll get all our programs and all our information is there as we put it out. And it's, it's, it's set up twice a day. So if you want to know anything, it's up to date, the number of cases. You can find out most of the areas, the provinces, but you also find out all our programs. And it's broken down by, by, you know, families and businesses, the working side and just general people, like questions. So you'll find most of your answers there. We are taking feedback, appreciate the feedback on landscaping. But a lot of the other businesses seem to be somewhat obscure. But if we can get them, as the discussion with Dr. Paul, anything that can deliver to the curb site or to a trunk, it gets business going. It gets things a little bit of income. Because, you know, you, if we want to come on the other side, we need the economy to be strong and we can't do that by just turning on a light switch. We need to ramp this up slowly. But to put it out, I think that's what we're hearing all over. So stay in the course and, you know, you've been a model for the, you know, the rest of the world, really. We've had some pretty good results when you compare us around, neighbors to the south and a lot of the European Union. But it takes hard work and it's going to take, you know, as we move into the summer, it's going to be tough. But our goal is really to get these things going, get people out to nice weather and allow them as quickly as possible to get at least semi-back to normal.
Dr. Paul?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their indulgence and their cooperation and understanding. I think together we'll be able to really flatten that curve and protect our most vulnerable. It's about protecting the most vulnerable. It's about, you know, staying home, saving lives, staying safe. That to me is the most important thing. And, and, and for local information, if you need, go to our website, eu2.ca. We have a daily update of how many cases we have, all kinds of information about masks and, and other, other things that frequently ask questions. I do, I will do frequent video logs and so on. So, and if you need anything, just, you know, call our office or send us some questions or if there's any doubts about things. We have a duty desk that takes in calls from businesses about questions about can I do this? Can I do that? And like I said, my, my, my directives to that staff is we have to work with our community and, and try to educate and, and work within the limits that we have. But again, let's be a bit more patient, the light's at the end of the tunnel.
Thanks, Dr. Paul. And I'll just wrap up by thanking everybody for participating tonight. You're going to get an email tomorrow from Adrian with some of the links that we spoke about before. And we'll add you to our list about different links, your updates we get. For an example, on the CPP E I deductions, that'll be, update will be sent when we get that. And I'll just end on a, on a sad note and then a happy note. I know there was a loss in the local business community in Cornwall today. Bud O'Byrne from Bud's Records in Cool Things was a member of the downtown community and had Cornwall's only record store. And I know it wasn't COVID-related, but certainly anytime we lose a member of the business community, I know it's tough. But ending on a glass half-full or a positive thing. I have just been very impressed by the professionalism and the dedication in the glass half-full as best we can with the business community. I see Sue Stewart on here and Luke from the Finch Market is an example of where, I don't think they've had a day off or many days off in the last month. But just trying to look at the glass half-full, drink half-full, there you go. And, and doing that, we have a wonderful business community that's donating, that's helping people out, that's doing deliveries, that's trying to help other people out in times of need. And it's certainly a positive light in a challenging time. So we're going to keep these up.